Yeah, so. Chief, would you lead us in the lunchroom?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public announcements, kudos and a bit of gratitude to Robbie Paul, the organizer of Put That Free Together, and Major Spencer Sanderson Ford, and all the volunteers who put a nice festivity right through downtown. All in public.
Cory Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Cory Smith. I live in Cape Creek. I'm Councilman of the Mountain State Department. I just wanted to raise an omission from the minutes associated with the second meeting where we reviewed the general plan and completed that review. As I recall, Councilman McGuire asked that the appendix, prepared by the Work Advisory Committee, be sent back to the committee for revision and in an effort to put a more positive tone into it. And that particular component was omitted from the minutes. I thought that, hopefully, Councilman McGuire also caught that, but I noticed it and wondered if that should be included. Thank you.
Have your interest, Mr. Carey.
No other speakers for call to the public?
If there's anyone else who should speak under call to the public. Okay, Council will proceed. Town manager, anything?
Not to stop.
Okay. Under the consent, there are two items: the approval of the February 29, 2016, special town council workshop minutes; approval of the March 7, 2016, member council meeting minutes.
No more.
Sorry. All those in favor who please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank the council.
Wait, wait, I'll wait a minute. Sorry. Can we take them one at a time? You said it was the March, right?
It was the last meeting that reviewed the plan, which I believe was in March.
Right, so can we take them one at a time?
I think that's what you just approved.
Well, we did them both. That's why I'm asking us to back. Let's start with February, get a consensus agreement, and let's do March, and I'll make our amendment. Or, who might want to?
Yeah, I need one council person to reconsider the vote. I need one council person to reconsider the vote.
Okay, reconsider.
Thank them. Motion for reconsideration is on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Back for review. We'll take them one at a time. One: the approval of the February 29, 2016, special town council workshop session minutes.
Move for a throw.
Say.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it for number one. Number two on consent is the approval of the March 7, 2016, member council meeting minutes.
I would move to have Tom's McGuire's statement amended and put into the March 7 regular council minutes.
Send it.
Minutes.
Counselor, we don't care. Do we need to table this and bring it back with the appropriate minutes recorded?
Well, can we, I think we just orally, we orally have exactly what you'd be at. Whoever, could we, whoever, could you repeat what you think it should say?
What's that, Tom?
Tom, did you? Yeah, I did have concerns, as Dr. Smith said. I don't know whether I, to what extent I expressed them during the meeting. They were expressed, I know, outside the meeting. So, it was my feeling in the meeting that as the major impetus of that appendix was incorporated within the document, that that was more significant than having them in or not in the appendix. I was very grateful to Dr. Allen for having supplied the appendix. I thought it was important to incorporate those ideas within the body of the general plan, and where they were in the appendix was therefore not as important.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, rather than force Mr. McGuire to try to recall, I would say table and ask Kerry to go and listen in and do it correctly.
I agree.
Thank you.
Was he author of the motion, the former?
I'll withdraw my motion.
And the second?
And the second. Now that Mayor is asking for to table the number two on the consent agenda to Kerry, our next meeting is April?
April 4th.
Until April the 4th. December?
Sorry.
All those in favor of Kaden, until April the 2nd, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. First of the general agenda items: council discussing approval of ordinance 2016 dash zero one, amending the official town of Cape Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning of parcels 211 dash 47 dash zero 16A and 211 dash 47 dash 100. Describe in exhibit one and exhibit two from Desert Rural, the R89, to a commercial buffer CB zone. The subject parcels are located just north of the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and 54th Street. As we go forward here, the only thing before the council tonight, the only thing, is whether or not council wishes to rezone something from Desert Rural to commercial buffer. That is the only thing before the council. Ian?
Thank you, Mayor. This case has advertised and noticed, reflects a request by the applicant, Meritage Homes, to change the underlying zoning of approximately 12.2 acres from Desert Rural, the R89, to commercial buffer CB zones. The applicant has provided narrative report and conceptual site plan for reference as a component of the rezoning application requirement. Although providing a conceptual site plan is a requirement within any rezoning application, specific requirements and subdivision process could be addressed through a separate application to review by the planning commission of council at a date. The conceptual plan depicts 55 blocks within the proposed commercial buffer zone area. Specific requirements and subdivision developments will be examined at the time of preliminary class submission and should be in compliance with subdivision ordinance as well as technical design requirements. The change in zoning classification from the existing desert rural zone to a commercial buffer zone is being requested in compliance with the North Carefree Highway specific area plan. The applicant may request a change to any zoning classification up to commercial buffer, including multiple residence zone. Per the town of Cape Creek zoning ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 3.5, multiple residential uses would be allowed by right in a commercial buffer zone. If the town council were to approve the request upon recommendation of planning commission, the case would be subject to referendum by the public. If the case were to be allowed by a public vote after a possible referendum, the applicant would require to submit requests for site plan approval, preliminary and final plan approvals, as well possibly as amendments to the conditions of North Carefree Highway's zoning plan. Planning commission recommendation to approve the request as noticed failed by unanimous vote of nothing. So it comes to this council as a recommendation to file. The council has several options in responding to requests to amend the town of Cape Creek zoning map. Council may approve the request, deny the request, approve the request conditionally, such as requiring that the change in zoning classification is done only with submitted plan, or approve the request for the change to any zoning classification up to commercial buffer, including multiple residence zone. For added background, not this council, but the previous council approved the request to rezonate by the Carefree Highway Church, Mount Carefree Highway. They had originally requested rezoning to general commercial, but council approved a lesser zone to commercial buffer. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
The applicant has seen her due.
Anything else?
No, sir.
The applicant?
Excuse me, I'm in.
Do we have a map to project up there?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Greg Davis. I'm with I Pain Consulting. And I am here representing Meritage Homes, who's the applicant for this project. With me tonight is Troy Hill from Meritage Homes as well. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and present our proposal to you. For those that aren't familiar with Meritage Homes, they are an Arizona-based company. They're located just down the road. It's got its own independent operations since 1985. And one of the things they're most known for is really their energy efficiency homes. They decided a few years ago, when the bit mark was down, really find a way to make themselves stand out and be different from the other home builders in the valley. And so what they did is spent a lot of time and energy, came up with ways to make homes more efficient, which not only makes them more long-lasting, but also lowers the utility bills for the homeowners. So things like spray insulation, their irrigation has rain sensor on it, so when it's raining, the irrigation doesn't fall. Things like that, that they developed and integrated into their homes. And because of that, they're really known across the country as being the ones going to make the home builders around. So, and the reason I think that's important is because they really care about the properties they build. They are from here. They want everyone to speak about them in a good way. And so they have a longstanding commitment to the quality of not only the homes, but also the communities that they build in. This is the site that we're here to talk about tonight. As Ian mentioned, it's 12.2 acres. It's located about an eighth of a mile north of Carefree Highway and about a quarter mile west of Cape Creek Road. So you can see the site outlined in yellow there, right next to the lows, which immediately to our east. The future commercial is to the south. I believe it's a McDonald's site and just a future retail site. We have currently the DR 89 zoning with SAP overlay. I'm sure everyone in this room is familiar with that SAP overlay. Really, it prescribes uses for the site, such as commercial, retail, hotel, assisted living, but as well as multifamily residential. So, when we first approached the town about this site and we learned about the SAP, because the SAP prescribed the commercial buffer zone, that's the zoning designation that we had requested, however, is also, as Ian had mentioned, we had recently learned that we could also accomplish our goal through the MR designation. It's a M up there, but it is MR designation. So, and I'll speak to that at the end of my presentation tonight a little more. But the project itself is 56 homes. It's about 4.6 acres per acre. A couple people have asked us, over the course of this project, you know, does it have to be 56? Be 52, or 45, or 10, or whatever number it may be. And, you know, this is where I really need to step up for my client, because a lot of people, developers in the community, will come in with a plan that may have 70 units. And when someone asks them, "Well, we like it, but can you cut 10 units out?" And then they go down to 60. "Well, we don't want to, but we can." Meritage didn't do that. They really brought in the minimum number of units that they felt makes the project work. And so, the answer to that question, we've been pretty consistent on is, if we could find a way to do it, we would. We understand that density is an important issue in Cape Creek. And that's why we came in with the least amount that we felt was applicable here. Two points of access to the site. We have 53rd Street and 54th Street. And we are proposing the streets be private, but they're not proposed to be gated. Now, one of the reasons we think the commercial buffer and SAP is put on this property in the first place is because of the changes of land use around it. You have some significant intensity of land use to the, existing to the east with the Lowe's site, the dock right next door, et cetera. But you also have the future uses to the south that are coming in. So from a land use practice, you have higher intensity uses that you want to buffer through a medium intensity use, such as our site, and then ultimately transitions to low, existing low-density uses to the north and further to the west. We have an existing trail border that runs along our north boundary. We're trying, or maintaining a buffer not only to protect that, but also some of the neighbors to the north. So we have a buffer along our north that's passing 100 feet wide that is unfenced, that's going to allow community access through there. We've been asked if we could accommodate a pedestrian trail that will allow connection from the properties to the north and to the west to the future retail areas. And so we are accommodating that on the east, or I'm sorry, the west side of 53rd Street, shown in the black on the map. And then, as the aforementioned trail along our north, we think is a great asset, not only to the community, but to this project as well. So we're making sure we provide pedestrian access to that through our site. These are the two streets we talked about here, 53rd and 54th Street. As you can see, these two roads that we're going to be improving as part of the project really only serve this immediate area. We do not continue on past our project, so we're not inviting traffic, you know, into other existing low-density areas that surround us. One of the unique elements of this product is that even though the front doors and garages orient towards the street, they really live out the back of the home. And instead of just putting homes back against the fence as we would in a typical community, these homes actually don't have fences in the back. You know, open onto a kind of shared sale courtyard area. So that each home, when you go out the back, has a nice covered patio area, semi-private area, and then they all connect to these paths that are shown here, which connect all through the community, as shown on those red lines up on there. They connect also to the primary amenity area of the project, which is located right by that red circle there in the middle. And here's a blow up of that community center. This is a pretty high-scale project for what we would typically do. So we feel that it's really appropriate to have a community amenity such as a pool, such as a clubhouse, and these gathering spaces. You know, you typically wouldn't see a pool for a 56-unit project. Many apartment projects are 200, 300 units before you can get a pool. So, we really are putting a lot into this from a amenity standpoint, because we think that's what the buyer is going to expect. In addition to the two trail connections at the north of our project, we also are providing a trail connection to our south that will connect to the retail areas so that people can walk when they want to get their Big Mac or Starbucks or whatever it may be. So this is a picture of the home that we designed for this project. We've had a lot of discussion on the architecture, even though we're still not at the zoning point yet. But obviously, it's very important to how this is going to look in the field, so we thought we'd present this information to you. You know, the type of buyer we saw this project is someone that isn't really born to Cape Creek now. Maybe people that live in the community. In fact, we think a large contingent of them will be. There'll be folks that, you know, either don't want to or can no longer maintain a multi-acre project that need, but want to stay a part of their community. And this gives them an option to do so. We also think this will be good for some of the folks that work in the community, but don't have a housing choice available to them. This will provide them for them. And we know this will be attractive to people outside of the community as well. But those people are going to be coming here, not because it's more affordable than Phoenix. They're going to come here because they want to be part of what makes Cape Creek unique. Real quick, a couple details in the architecture. We have quite a bit of detailing, which is hard to see at this scale. But you'll see some exposed rafters, entry towers, audience we use materials instead of just tucko. We use a lot of stone, metal, tile, brick, et cetera. So we have quite a bit of eclectic look to the homes. This is the rear of the homes. The living is primarily single-story. We do have a floor plan, as you can see in the middle there, that has a second story on it. But it's only for accessory living areas, such as the second bedroom, a game room, et cetera. The home sizes right now are designed at 1,700 to 2,700 square feet in size. We have both front and side entry garage designs. And as you can see, hopefully, on this exhibit, you know, there's a lot of fenestration and covered patio area in the back, really promote that outdoor indoor lifestyle that we think is going to be very attractive to potential buyers. Some of the benefits that we think this project provides to the town, I want to go over here, just a few of them. One is that it provides that sustainable land use transition. With the existing lows and the loading dock and the potential commercial to the south, this site really isn't that geared towards that low-intensity lifestyle that the DR 89 would promote. And so we think that this provides a viable and sustainable option for that. Under the uses that are allowed by the SAP, we think this is the least intense of those uses. So from an immediate neighbor standpoint, we think this is the most compatible of those uses for that group. And hopefully, they're here tonight and will share that sentiment with you as well. You know, we've tried to design a plaza trails and connectivity to the trails throughout the project to help promote that outdoor living that we think is healthy and really desirable in this area. I spoke a little bit about Meritage's energy efficiency living. And, you know, we are providing a housing option which doesn't exist much past the in-Cape Creek today. And Cape Creek prides itself on being diverse and eclectic. But there's not a lot of diverse housing options in Cape Creek, and we think that this would be a benefit to the town by offering it. And the final point on that is that it'll bring additional families that will help support, you know, community amenities, parks, schools, but most importantly, maybe the retail. You know, 56 families that will be using the restaurants and stores should be a big asset to long-term financial viability of the community. So, the P&amp;Z meeting, as Ian mentioned, although we did not get their support, we actually left the meeting feeling pretty good because there were a lot of very positive comments about the proposal. But there wasn't concern specifically about the zoning itself. We did have a lot of residents from the greater community that didn't want to see this project happen. We can understand that. But we were pleased to see that many people that live immediately around it did support the project as long as we could work out the zoning issue. And so, I'd like to spend just my last couple minutes talking about what we see as a kind of a solution to the zoning request. So, as Ian mentioned, and what we have been working on in the last few weeks, is that we are acceptable to the town supporting us under the MR designation. That works for us. I think that solves a lot of concerns some of the neighbors have. Their concern with the CB designation is that if we go away, you know, what does that open the door for to come in, those other CB uses? So having the MR designation helps limit what can be developed on this site. But in addition to that, we also have a proposed condition of approval that we've shared with staff, and basically ties the site plan that you see up on the screen and we've submitted to the town, ties that to the approval, such that if a site plan that isn't in compliance with that isn't submitted within a one-year period of time, the council could, at the discretion of course, direct staff to revert the zoning back to its original designation. So that, those two things are what we feel gives the town and the neighbors confidence that Meritage is going to build what we say. And if we don't, for whatever reason it may be, then the next person that wants to come in has to start over from scratch, has to start over from the beginning, and convince everyone that this is what their proposal is directly to do. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Question for the council. Councilor Lepski.
Hi.
How would you define substantial performance?
Very good question. I'll give it, Councilman. I think we would define it as something within same number of lots, same amount of open space, same intent as far as trails, same intent as far as access, everything else. Now, whether the third street has six homes instead of five homes, that I would think is not under that definition, but it's certainly meant to show you that this is a plan we plan to report with very minor modifications. And if you have a better definition, we are more than welcome to hear it.
I like that one.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilor, that's our question.
Is it your intention at some later date, if you get approval, to dedicate the material streets that are currently private? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Councilman, they are proposed to be private. We would not propose to dedicate them to the town.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
The parcel directing to the south, which remains private, and I understand from discussions with you guys, you made an effort to acquire that, but it failed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that would have made it, what, another five acres?
I believe.
Timmy's property of this town.
Two and a half, right? Two and a half acres is the size of.
Two and a half, okay.
Anything else?
I have a question. Well, I was there during the planning that you came forward, and some of the concerns they did have was for the driveways, wanting to accommodate a large truck, that type of thing. And I think another concern that they had was the amount of overflow parking was so miniscule. How are you going to handle that if somebody had a party? Where would people park? Because when you do these types of small streets, I doubt there's room for people to park overnight if they're visiting or they have a large truck. So how are you going to accommodate a robust?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Clancy, this exhibit kind of helps show what the current intent is. We do have dedicated off-street parking in some areas. We need to, and what we told the commission, we would revisit that, determine how many we need with the staff to determine how many is appropriate, and find where to put that in. And then, secondly, regarding the driveway length, this exhibit, I don't have a pointer, but you can see the driveways on some of the homes. The minimum driveway length is going to be about 20 feet. And you can see that in many instances, it's well over 20 feet. Yeah, how we've addressed that in other situations is we try to be very forthright with the potential buyers, say, this is what the product is getting. If you have a 250, don't buy this plan. Can't guarantee that's going to happen though, unfortunately. And so we do our best to try to prevent that. But many of our driveways are well over the 20 feet requirement. And when we get to that site plan. we get to that site plan level, we will specifically tell you how many plans, how many driveways we have and what depth and dimension, so we'll address that.
Is this going to be an HOA?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor, ask your question.
In discussions prior to even going to the planning commission, you indicated that we needed 56 units on 12.2 acres. To me, it looks very crowded, but you said that, I think you said you need that to make it work?
Yes, Councilman, yeah, we've ran the numbers again because we had that question, and I can't guarantee that losing one or two units wouldn't kill the project. It might, it might not, but 56 is the minimum number that we feel comfortable that we can afford with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we open the public hearing, Counselor, this has an odd designation, specific area plan. Could you define and explain an SAP?
I don't know. Could you help me? It's a subset of your general plan. I don't know.
Yes, Mayor, the specific area plan was developed by staff and previous council to address this area along Carefree Highway. It allows for specific conditions that might not be allowed in the other town, but the conditions was that an applicant would be able to come in and rezone up to commercial buffer in this area through this process, through the rezoning process with the commission council.
Okay. Will open the public hearing, Karen.
Stephen Orville.
Hello. Mayor Francia, Vice Mayor Lamar, and the Spanish members of the council. My name is Stephen Orville, and I am a resident at 35421 North 54th Street, which is a parcel of approximately an acre and a half that is directly north of the site that we're considering for rezoning tonight. I gave extensive remarks opposed to rezoning at the planning commission meeting. They are part of the record. I'm not here tonight to repeat them, but I do want to bring out three particular areas, reiterate concern, which I think I also share with a great many of my neighbors and other town residents. Before I do that, I do want to take issue with something the gentleman from Meritage just said earlier. There are a number of people in this room who were at that commission hearing. There was not any measurable positive support among any of the public that spoke. I think to say that there was, was simply not true. I recognize we're in a political season where a lot of folks stretch truth to make a point, but I can assure you that that is not the case, and the bulk of the people that talk, and many of the people in this room, would be strongly opposed to this proposal. So the three areas that I'd like to discuss briefly concern the following. First, the density. Second, what this would mean going forward to the town. And third, how this affects the character of this town. I realize that there is a commercial consideration to have a minimum number of residences in the 12-plus acres in order to make the project work, but there is nowhere else, anywhere in the area where we have much more than one house per acre or acre and a half. And to have, I believe the quote was approximately four and a half to five residences per acre completely destroys the character of the residential environment in that part of town. That leads me to the second point, which is the issue of what this would do for setting a precedent. We all are familiar with the odd gerrymandering to the west of Cave Creek Road that a small section of our neighboring town with Carefree, Carefree had allowed them to put a commercial area in. I don't think that should be an excuse for us to change the character of Cave Creek. And finally, I'd like to just remind you that the character of this town relies on its desert rural and western lifestyle, and we are open to a diverse source of residents who take pride in moving here precisely because they want that open space. I think this project goes against that character, and I would urge you to deny the applicant's request for rezoning. Thank you.
Kurt Manson.
I am here just to let you know, now I grew up in the horse business and I grew up in the west. I've grown, lived all over the place, to let you know that I'm against this type of zoning period. High-density housing does not belong here in Cave Creek. What you have, I want to emphasize this, what we have here is so terribly unique. And let me tell you what really happens when you lay this kind of a thing out, because I've lived through it. And as you put in some kind of housing tract, which is all this is, and yeah, it looks great, but then here's what happens. Well, you know, those horses, it's kind of dusty and, what's that smell? Oh, good grief, and now, oh, look, oh, my goodness, you've got arena lights on. Suddenly, you get a bunch of complaints. And you know what happens? Those equestrian properties go away because it's causing too much problem for this. And it starts to change who we are in Cave Creek. People come here not because we're eclectic, it's because we're western. And remember one thing diverse, the root word is divide. We have to have a commonality of vision here. And see, people come here, now I'm an artist, people come to my studio, and here's what I hear daily about coming to Cave Creek, that is the coolest town, it's cowboy town. I love going up there, I love going over to Harold's. And you know what they do is they come to my studio, they might spend thousands on a sculpture. And you know what they do? They go in here, they come into town, and they hit Rancho Minnana. Or they go in, they go down to the lazy, like, oh, what's in here? And they start looking and they shop here, and they're looking for that experience. What we have here in Cave Creek is the opportunity to give people an experience they will get nowhere else in this valley or in central Arizona. The closest is going to be Prescott. And we have that chance, so we want to keep it that way, keep it exactly the way it is so not in terms of we don't want progress, but we want to be the right kind of progress. We want to see this town stay as unique as it is because we have that opportunity. And here's the deal, gang, you're the gatekeepers to this. We've elected you to be a gatekeeper to this wonderful lifestyle, so the people that come here can hike, they can come into town, they can do all these wonderful things, horseback and otherwise, and we have a commonality of who we are as being Cave Creek people. So I really urge you to think about this and the long-term ramifications of it, because it will not be one little thing. It will change that whole area, and it's going to start moving. And that's the last thing we need here. I thank you for your time.
Cheryl Carmichael.
It almost looks snipe. My name is Cheryl Carmichael, I live at 5401 East Elsinore Drive-In in Cave Creek. I've lived here for 14 years. I have a little clarification. I, you know, I have spoke a lot at these meetings about this particular project and this property, but I do have a clarification question for you. You had mentioned, Ian, earlier that you were using this as an example of the parcels next to the church that was zoned commercial. Could you clarify that statement?
I was explaining the process that the church asked for general commercial zoning and the council approved it for a less rezoning.
The actual church itself? That, or the old church?
Correct.
Okay, well, and that also is two acres off of the highway, correct? Okay. This is beyond the two acres off the highway. This is 12 acres past that two acres. This is into neighborhood, so I just wanted to clear with that. Also, I want to be clear with, and I know you're sick of being here in the SAP, and if it's hard never to bring it up again, can't help it. It is an overlay. It is a plan. It is not a zoning change. We like the DR-89. We also respect Meritage, and I give them a lot of credit for coming forward and asking for this project. They're a quality home builder, and I respect what they're doing. I'm not so sure that this project belongs in our neighborhood. And I think what we prefer is that, obviously, it's a one-house per acre. We like that. That may not be reality. There was also a statement said about, I remember Dave Smith saying to, at the planning and zoning, that, gee, you know, I'm so sorry that you put behind lows. I'm so sorry about that. You know, but that was Cave Creek. And I've heard that from, from even you, I think, Mayor, that I'm sorry that Lowe's did that, that's Cave Creek. Well, you know, I keep bringing lows up because it's an example of what can happen to a neighborhood. I invite you, again, as I have always, come to my dining room, and you'll see low truck lights in my dining room. So I just use that as an example. Look at this overall project. I'm asking for you not to approve commercial buffer zoning at all. I'm not even sure I'm convinced on conditional. I don't trust that conditional is a good thing. One of the problems we got into with the SAP plans, because the current owner, in my opinion, previously threatened the town to see them, there was never a zoning change, and you guys reversed the decision, and now we're sitting with that. How can you approve a conditional? The same thing. So I worry about the conditional. If it's a Meritage project, two Meritage projects, I might be willing to listen to that. But what's going to keep the owner from saying, gosh, you guys conditionally approved something, that means it's zoned? And this is not zoned, it is zoned here. And thank you for listening to me once again, honestly, Dave. Thank you.
Linda Ruben Martinez.
I was at the last county planning commission meeting, and I also want to record that because Cave Creek is a small polite town, I think that may have been why Meritage got the impression that perhaps people weren't as opposed as they clearly were, because people didn't say anything negative about them. And that's one of the reasons that after 43 years in the valley, I moved to Cave Creek. I've not been here as long as many of you residents, and I know some of you've heard this when you're at the planning commission meeting, but I think that bears repeating. I lived in a beautiful neighborhood in Phoenix for 30 years. When I moved in there, some of you are going to hear things that sound familiar. It had horse properties, two to five acre properties, sheep, horses, chickens, everything, and homes that were built on a certain amount of property that was very good for a suburb of Phoenix. All of the businesses, except for one grocery store and a corner small market, were locally owned. I bought the house from the guy who owned the pizza shop, and I loved that neighborhood. And over the time I lived there, I saw everything that I am seeing in Cave Creek. I saw a huge open area that was rezoned, and it was sold for apartment homes. And I heard a lot of the same things. When they first came in, they requested a certain amount of zoning. Partway through, the zoning changed. And then once that was approved, then we started with changing the site plan from one-story to two-story to some three-story. That was the end of the sunset. I mean, there were just so many things, and by the time I left, my front door was broken down one day with such force, I somebody was hopped up on drugs, that it ripped the frame right out of the wall, the brick wall. There will be changes if you start changing zoning to allow for denser housing. There will be changes in the quality of life, not just for the local residents. I don't live in that neighborhood. I would expect this room to be full because this is a huge change. You're right, there aren't a lot of these areas in Cave Creek, and that's important. And I live up Spur Pass, I don't have to worry yet about my zoning changing. I hope I never do. I haven't lived here long, and I'm sorry I didn't get to have some of the experiences that you have, but I've been coming to this town for decades, and I fell in love with it long ago. I can't stop the burger king, the lawnmower, those kinds of things, but I can be here to support my neighbors and say, don't ruin that quality of life, don't make it. I moved here with a hundred mile a day round trip to my practice. There's a reason I did that, there's a reason they moved here too. Please respect that and support the planning commission's unanimous vote against this.
I, Ian White, Cave Creek resident, good evening, Mayor, Council. I would like to read a brief statement by a well-respected citizen of Cave Creek. Cave Creek has much for which to be thankful. How many communities can say they wake up to the visual splendor and wonder of what we do every day? No resident tires of aether air, daybreak, and songs and diversity in our birds, though wild or large prow animals like coyotes, or the breathtaking sunrise, sunset, and planetarium like night skies. And that is just our natural blessings. Cave Creek has an enviable lifestyle. Rural may be as dated as Norman Rockwell's Saturday Evening Post cover, but it is alive, thriving, and current in Cave Creek. Who didn't want to be a cowboy or a cowgirl when you were a kid? Our horses buck, our cowboys are real, authentic, and when they speak, they do so with a maid in the USA drawl. The community has been a haven for artists and musicians since its founding in 1860. The town inspired them and does so now. This community we call home is unique. What you just heard was written by our mayor, Mayor Vince Francia. These are the words that we live by. Tonight, you're being asked to take a drastic step to rezon desert rural 89 land to commercial buffer. Do 56 duplexes and triplexes on 12 acres seem like Cave Creek to you? In due deliberations, I strongly urge you to consider and heed the words of our mayor. A no vote is recommended by me. Increasing the density of this area by tenfold will forever ruin the rural rustic lifestyle of this neighborhood. We do not want the cowboy to fade off into the sunset. Thank you.
As usual, I have a question. More for me than you. I'm Jerry Smith again, 7265 East Scottsdale Mountain State Drive in Cave Creek. Thank you, Mayor and Council for being here again. I have three points about the rezoning request. The first concerns just data associated with the value of desert rural. Several economists at Arizona State University a few years ago looked at housing sales, 600,000 housing sales in Maricopa County between 2000 and 2004. The interesting thing, among many others that they found, was that average lot sizes of your neighbor's property increases your value. In other words, one of the reasons why I think people are responding to this proposed change is that the zoning change, increasing density, is not neutral to the value of their homes. Low density pays values to everyone in this community, and that's why we feel strongly about it, not the least of which is the western character that we move here for. Secondly, I wondered in thinking about this project, Meritage is a wonderful developer, it's a well-recognized company, it's been very successful, and what do they know that we don't know? There are 2,526 homes on the market today, right now, in this metropolitan area, and I selected the houses that are on sale between 250,000 and 600,000. I said, well, gee, that's kind of interesting. How does it compare? How does Cave Creek compare with Phoenix? Well, to my surprise, in contrast with the houses in Phoenix, Scottsdale, and elsewhere around this area, between May 2014, we hit a peak median sales price of $787,000. Now... Now, we're closer to the low. We dropped from 787,000 to 424,000 in April 2015. The foreclosure rate in Cave Creek is twice that of Phoenix. It's nearly twice that of the national average. This is current. This is from Zillow this afternoon. This is not a market that looks like it's robust relative to North Scottsdale, relative to Phoenix, relative to other areas around us. It therefore suggests to me that the kinds of changes we're talking about, buffer zoning, making this project so that you reduce the price per square foot, are more likely than perhaps even the builder recognizes themselves. The Meritage proposal would have prices per square foot based on a range of offering prices that they suggested, between $175,000 and $206,000 per square foot. The average square footage price in Cave Creek is $186,000. So, they're either slightly below or considerably above that price, given their current estimates. Lastly, when I spoke about this before, I raised the question of water. And someone asked me afterwards, "How much water do people in Cave Creek use?" $183,000 per person per day. Adding 112 people to that area, okay, means that we have to look very closely at the capacity of the line from the Central Arizona Project to Cave Creek to see if we actually have the water. I just don't know. The appendix to the general plan suggested that infrastructure was fragile and in need of replacing, but it wasn't more specific than that. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Kathy Green.
Mayor and Council, thank you for your service. And I'm going to keep it very short. My name's Kathy Green at 35350 North 53rd Place. That's just northern Elsinarola, 53rd Place. I'm just in opposition to the commercial buffer zone. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Duffin-Wall.
Good evening to all. I'm Suzanne Duffin-Wall. I've been a Cave Creek property owner for about ten years. Thank you for allowing me, many citizens, to express their concern about this project. I sincerely hope that those of you here serving as our council members, later on this evening when you vote, you'll be of the opinion that you should echo that unanimous seven-zero vote of your planning commissioners. At their meeting several weeks ago, there were many Cave Creek residents who spoke. And they were not all local to this particular neighborhood area. Many of them were in Cave Creek, but miles and miles away. They shared, however, the same concern about this project. And they felt as though all of Cave Creek would be impacted by this zoning request. In the original brochure, I believe that Meritage Homes listed a zoning category of, was it MR, Mr. Cordell? And now, of course, they're asking for commercial buffer. I wonder why that happened? I wonder if it's the property owner who's worried that if the plan for this Meritage flat mountain doesn't work, what is going to happen? If it fails, will he, the owner of the property, be in a position where he will have to scramble to find a new venture to support them? Commercial buffer opens the door to so many possibilities. I'm not sure if what was opening screen a while ago was the full list or not. But I bet that there might be some possibilities in that list, a full list, which many of the neighbors certainly would not welcome with any warm, outstretched arms with this scenario. I don't think that the town should gamble on an unknown future possibility. That makes me very nervous. I'm not here to argue about duplexes, triplexes, twelve point two acres for a hundred-plus people, but I am concerned what the future holds for this acreage. If it goes commercial buffer, I'm sure it will never, ever return to...
Three minutes.
It will never return to agriculture or residential setting. Thank you for listening.
Andrew Fowler.
Who's the mayor?
Andrew Fowler.
Good evening, Council. I put on the card, my name is Andrew Fowler, 6415 East Dove Valley Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. I've been a resident of Cave Creek and have owned my home for seven years. Grew up in the Cave Creek Carefree area as a child. Ran track for Cactus Shadows High School, so I'm familiar with the area. I love the town. Love the city. I'm here to lend my support for the project. I don't want to restate anything that's been stated. I do think that there's value to the project. I think that the specific area plan, have this idea in mind. I think, Council, if the concern is what on earth could happen, what could commercial buffer zoning in the end bring? I think Meritage has answered that question and provided concessions in order to make sure that this is what they're selling, that you're not going to get a bait and switch. And turns out, we got another, another commercial property right next to Lowe's. It wasn't what was intended. I appreciate your time and I have to lend my support. Thank you.
Steve Knotts.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I too would like to support the project. I think it's outstanding builder. They're a local group. They do fantastic work. I'm very familiar with their company. And the main thing that I can see is that I understand if I was a neighbor, my big concern was, how's this going to affect me? Is the traffic going to increase or are there going to be more people around? Really, the bottom line is, it's not going to increase the traffic at all for them because if you come in on 53rd Street, basically it's a U-turn, you come back on 54th Street, there'll be, you know, fractionally more traffic on the Carefree, but Carefree's already got traffic. So, I don't see it how it impacts anyone but that, you know, the project itself. So, anyway, I support it. I think it's a good project.
Sorry, do you live in Cave Creek?
I do, seven years.
Thank you. Ms. Carrie.
Lois Knotts.
Okay, third time's charm. All right, I support this project because it's way up there in the corner. There's not going to be any traffic or anything bothering it at all. We're just up there being quiet. Going to beautify it. It's going to be beautiful. And when you get through, you're going to be proud of it. It's going to be a big asset to Cave Creek. Let me tell you, when we moved out there, John Russell, previously on the side, and he said, "Boy, you're going to get calls." I said, "What?" He said, "You're going to get calls." Well, sure enough, we got called. We had too much dust. We had too much manure. We had too many horses. We had too many traffic. We had this, we had that. That's what happens when you have a horse ranch. You can't help it. We clean three times a day. We clean all the time. We still get calls. That's what happens when you have a horse ranch. So, we're going to eliminate that. We're not going to have any food. We're not going to have any flies. We're not going to have this or that. So, they should be happy as a dog did. They'd really be happy. So, I'm just saying that if they had any problems about the horse food, they better vote for this. Thank you.
Joa.
Thank you for letting me speak. Good evening. And the previous owner had a lot of calls before we ever came. In fact, when I was visiting him, didn't look at the ranch, the environmental, people were there because of the horse food. But that's just how a ranch is. And I feel bad for the neighbors because there is flies, there is smells, and there is an impact on all the neighbors when you have a horse ranch. Because when people come in, the dust flies. When people ride by, the horse... I feel bad because the neighbors get dusted. This is going to eliminate all the dust. It's going to eliminate a lot of the flies, all the things that they haven't liked. And that's just, goes with the territory of a ranch. And we did try hard to keep it nice. But what I wanted to say is, I went to the town of Cave Creek and I talked to every, I spent two days, I talked to every owner of every business I could. And it was hard work. And I talked to almost every restaurant owner there. And you're welcome to go talk to all these owners too. They are in favor of developing this project because they said in July, August, September, I mean, you know, the middle of the summer, they said, "The people love the town. They love to go to the activities, but who cares about the restaurant owner? They have nobody in their restaurant." They said, "It's hard. They're too busy to be here tonight. But you need to please consider these business owners." I went to them because I've been a business owner all my life. And I just said, "Do you want this to be a ranch? Or one or a few houses? Or do you actually want a neighborhood there? Because these people are going to live here and they're going to support your business. And they're going to pay sales tax. And they're going to pay impact fees. And I know Cave Creek's in debt, and I don't want it to be in debt. Let this project help you get out of debt." I feel you have a responsibility to the town to help us get out of debt. I love Cave Creek. I'm a resident here and I hope I always will be. But let's get out of debt. Meritage is the best builder around. You're not going to find a better builder. And if you turn this down, who is going to build here? It's going to be dust. Nope. And you need the money. Let's help all these, you can talk to all these restaurant owners. Believe me, they want people to live here in July to go eat at their restaurant. They want people to come eat at their restaurant in August. So, please, we're in favor of this. I don't think you're going to find a better builder. They're trying very hard to work with Cave Creek to make it nice. And there is such little impact. I mean, really, people come up and speak, but they live in all parts of the valley. The impact this is going to have is going to pay down their debt. Thank you.
Amy Stewart. What I have to say is I already did something. Reed Stewart.
Reed Stewart, are you for or...
I'm for.
You're for. Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Reed Stewart, an owner of one of the parcels. And during the time that I've been an owner, I've been to several meetings and spent a lot of money to comply with the town regulation, including the design, engineering, consulting, surveying, environmental, architectural, management, landscaping, demo permitting, and et cetera. And I think the best use of our property is to let this project be the transition between the commercial and residential. And I might clarify or point out that the entire east side of the property is bordered by Lowe's. Thank you.
I was looking from Lawrence Pace, not Mark. Is that for the segment? I mean Lawrence Pace?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and Town Council, Lawrence Pace, I reside at 35250 North 53rd Place in Cave Creek South Forty Seventh Division, which is immediately north of the proposed area. I sent a personal letter to Ms. Carrie that I assume is in the record. I want to speak now as a representative of the property owners of the Cave Creek South Forty. And before I begin, I just want to respond to one of the pro individuals who spoke before me. When I moved in in 2004, the property that bordered up the Cave Creek South Forty was the All American Equestrian Facility. There were never any problems there with the lights, with the horses. I have a horse property. I've got horses. I've got no problems with that. As I'm sure you're aware, there were dramatic changes that took place. I don't want to go into detail, but I don't want to have face-to-face consultation with the people who spoke before me. But generally, of the problems that took place there, the poor management, buildup of the newer transient people, whatever, enough said. As I said, I'm speaking on behalf of the Cave Creek South Forty property owners. Many are here and will speak their minds. And I represent those who are away or are working or unable to attend tonight. I apologize for having my computer in front of me, but my computer wouldn't work. Our Cave Creek South Forty is not listed on any entrance sign to our subdivision. Unless you get a tax bill or in the planning department, you probably have not even heard of us. We like it that way. We are a hidden jewel, mountain views on three sides, inconvenienced the shopping on Cave Creek Road, Carefree Highway, and the town core. We are a very stable subdivision. When I moved in, Elsinarola was just a run of dirty roads. It's now got chip seal. And we have a cave subdivision until we get to 52nd Street. Many of our owners bought directly from the developer. And all the rest are second owners like myself. And we have two new builds starting in the area. There's been no flipping and no short sales. On behalf of Matt Peterson and his wife, Jimmy Becky Cherry, Carl and Andrea Bowman, Eddie Jody Lazenby, Kerry Gibson and his wife Samantha, Ginny and Richard Elder, Scott and Diana Coors, Jennifer Bradley-Hus, and some who I may have forgotten, we are 100% opposed to the change to DR, from DR 89 to commercial buffer. Cave Creek is now fifty-six homes on twelve acres. I also attended the Meritage presentation. I attended the planning commission, which women commissioners said this type of project does not belong in a neighborhood like Cave Creek. If need be, let them go to a more commercial area in the core and build something even on the north end of the area. Protect our quality of light, our investment, our yield of the neighborhood. Invoting in that. Thank you very much.
David Farmer.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know that my name is David Farmer. I'm a resident of Cave Creek and I am in favor of the project. Thank you.
Ms. Karen.
Jeffrey Hadley.
I'm a resident of Cave Creek and I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Karen.
I have no other speakers left here.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Yes. I couldn't resist, Council. My name is Tim Spence. I live at 34643 North 53rd Street. I've lived here since I was a kid, since 1968. I've watched Cave Creek grow up. I've watched it come from an outlaw town, a cowboy town. Come on, folks, get it right, to it is now. There are a lot of things I didn't like. There's a lot of things I do like. It is what it is. Y'all decide what you want out there. But I'm in favor of what's going on. At least I'll get rid of my problem to the north of me. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak publicly or in a studio? Okay, so we'll start with you.
Okay, so we'll start with you.
Thanks, everyone. 35055 North 53rd Place in Cape Creek. Dennis Coleman.
Thank you.
I've been living in Cape Creek for over 20 years. Love the town. These changes, yes, I would like the problem. Would be nice to have go away. I live directly behind this parcel of the 12 acres. It's been a very nuisance problem, like they said. They said earlier, years and years of flies, problems. Yeah, part of me would like this to go away because it's been a nuisance for 10 years I've been living there. Well, 11 years. I worry about the change. I live directly behind Lowe's as well. The light pollution is a problem for me. Every night, I sit back there. I listen to the people on the intercom. I'm in my hot tub. People are getting paged. It's annoying. The problem with the lights, thank God they finally turned them down a little bit. I couldn't see the stars anymore. I'm worried that 56 houses are going to have a lot more light pollution. We live in the dark. I moved from Tatum Ranch. I had neighbors that would bother me and say stuff, and they're going, "Why don't you live in a neighborhood that's so tight and people are so friendly?" So they forced me out of Tatum Ranch to move to Cape Creek farther north. I love Cape Creek. I love how you can see the stars at night. So when you talk about the commercial buffer zone, that concerns me. I don't want a hotel to go in. I don't want a car dealership to go in or something even worse, but 56 homes is a lot. I just would like you guys to both know, like I said earlier, the council talked about it, about city planning. They're all against it. Again, I'm torn because of the problems with the flies. I have parties in my house, and kids come over, and there's flies everywhere. So I wish they would do a better job. They said they clean up free time today. They have a lot of horses. So again, Councilman, thank you for the time, and I just wanted to get that off my chest. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, good evening, Council. I'm Lisa Blood. I live on El Cindero. I've only been here a year and a half. I moved from Chandler, and when I came here, I thought I died and gone to heaven. And now I'm wondering if I died, and I'm in a bad dream. I think this is going to be a traffic mess. You have that many people, it's just so difficult to get into the roads as it is. I ask you to think about this and know that the people that live on El Cindero are not in favor of this. We've paid a lot of money to live here. We love it here, but please, please, think about what the residents on this street want and need, and the town as well. Thank you.
Okay, who entered, one more speaker about to bring us to 21 for the evening. Sorry.
Hi, Art Robertson, El Cindero Drive. A couple of things. Number one is the majority of the people here tonight who voted for it are not property owners, the majority. There are some that were owners, and I give them their right to speak. The thing that I look at back there is, I don't know how to describe the feeling of, all of a sudden, the world is shrinking around us, on El Cindero especially, with homes coming in, with different... Different numbers of people living in these areas. Fifty-some odd or approximately 50 homes bringing in that average of 2.3 people, something like that. And I just want you to know that I would really like you to consider the fact that the numbers have proven to be, in any other development, a detriment to the community, when the community is like Cape Creek does. Thank you.
Okay, that... Twenty-one speakers have voiced their opinion. Twelve are against the project and nine are for. Before I bring this to Council for discussion and debate, that Council's going to take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Council is going to begin its discussion and debate on Agenda Item Number One. Again, what is before the council, whether or not it wishes to approve or deny, and is any of this property to commercial buffer motion may have started?
May I ask for some clarity? Ian, I'm a little confused as to what we're really talking about and what was presented also by Mayor Jones. Are we looking at commercial buffers most people have stood up and talked about, or are we talking about multi-resident zone? Considering they showed in MR, which they said they didn't know anything about, so can we get a broader scope of what that is?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Plancy, and his counsel. The motion on the agenda and what has been advertised is to resell to commercial buffer. That is the motion that you would have to make. Move in second floor. In the discussion, you could discuss approving a lesser zoning such as multifamily, multi-residential. But the motion that needs to start is what's on the agenda.
Is there a motion to get the discussion started, Councilman LeBaron?
Ernie, usually you do these low ones, so I'll do the best I can. Motion to give first reading to Ordinance 02016601, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cape Creek, Arizona, amending the official town of Cape Creek zoning map by changing the underlying zoning parcel 211-47-016A and 211-47-100, described in Exhibit One and depicted in Exhibit Two, from desert rural, the R89, to a commercial buffer CB zone. The subject parcels are located just north of the northwest corner of Cape Creek Highway and 54th Avenue.
We need a second?
Second.
Motion had been made in second, Councilman LeBaron.
What we're discussing here is not an approval of Maritage Homes. What we're discussing here is a zoning issue. And in my opinion, the proposal before us not being a site plan doesn't merit the change in zoning. If we want a change in zoning, we need to see a site plan.
Can you repeat that last? I didn't hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I think if we want to consider a change in zoning, we need a more definite plan on what is to be built there.
Councilman Esser, you have a second?
Well, I'm not sure I agree with Councilman LeBaron, but that's not unusual. I seconded the motion because the discussion opened and sort of here, everybody.
Councilman Lefkley? I thought the SAP was entirely inappropriate for these parcels, and, but it is what it is. So my goal now and in the future would be to make the best of a bad situation. And I think if what we have before us is rezoning to commercial buffer, then definitely not.
Councilman Clancy?
Well, I asked for clarity of what was being said in number four, and it says, "Approve the request with change any zoning classification up to commercial buffer, including multiple residents," maybe I'm dense. I need to understand then the difference between would commercial buffer go away, and what then is multi-residence, and how do they differ? And what would it require if you did do that?
Councilman Clancy, multiple residence zone is a lesser zoning category than a commercial buffer. Commercial buffer also allows a similar plan has been presented, but it would only allow for multiple residence project, not commercial of any kind.
Maybe it's semantics. What does commercial mean then in zoning? If they're building houses?
Commercial buffer zone is, commercial buffer zone happens to allow a wide range of uses, including retail, office, residential uses, terminals. And that's what they've asked for. They also said they would accept a lesser zoning category of multi-residential. So you would get approval of the commercial buffer zone if the council wished to consider rezoning to multi-residential.
Thank you.
Councilman Bunch?
I'm really interested in making me speak. I'm going to tell you all a little story that just kind of worried you a little bit. Once upon a time, I had a house in the neighborhood of 51st Avenue in Peoria, and I had a cotton field again in the road, and the crops, and the crop dusters come by and crop dust the cotton. They didn't build houses there, so I looked around, and I decided I'd move to 49th Avenue and Happy Valley Road, up here in Illinois, where there were acre lots. You can see all the way to Skunk Creek Landville from the back porch. Beautiful, nothing desert, but it was open space. I lived there when I looked up one day and realized I could probably walk rooftop to rooftop all the way to Skunk Creek Landville, but didn't have to get off and get down across the street somewhere in there. These folks in the neighborhood, Elsina, I believe, deserve something different than 56 homes on 12 and a half acres and a little bit of a better buffer than that. I don't believe this is the highest and best use for this property, so I'm not going to support it.
President Mayor Lamar?
I haven't got anything to add that hasn't been said, really.
There are two things. One is what is before the council about rezoning to commercial buffer, but as I listen to the testimony, there is another matter, and that is the use of horses near residences that do not have horses. I'm in the horse business. I'm around 2,000 horses every day. They're beautiful animals. They're passionate animals. They're a joy to watch race. They also produce a lot of manure, which attracts a lot of flies, so I think that's something the neighborhood needs to work out completely apart from what's before the council. The rule, please, Carrie, on this?
Councilman Esser?
Clarification of the vote from the mayor. We're voting on the commercial buffer.
That is what is before the council.
And we have a list of what can go in commercial buffer, other than the project appearing right. Man, I really hate start, but as good as I think the project is, and as long as I've been here 28 years, and for you, I fell in love with Cape Creek when I was 12, so I don't see that corner, especially as the proximity close, as horse property. I think in the commercial buffer category, there are other uses that might get better, professional offices, whatever. But based on what I heard tonight, and it was pretty clear to me that the folks were upset, I read the commission minutes, and I'm going to vote no. No.
Based on the commercial overlay? No.
Carrie, would you call?
You'll need a wait.
Councilman Bunch?
Still no.
Councilman Clancy? I still know.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
No.
Councilman LeBaron?
No.
Councilman Lipsky?
No.
Mayor France?
No. By vote of seven to zero, the motion is denied. Is there any other motion? Is there any other motion on the floor? Thank you, council. Proceed to Agenda Item Number Two. Miss Carrie, as I understand it, the applicant has asked for this motion to be continued to April the 18th.
That's correct, ma'am.
All those in favor, please say a "aye." Aye! Opposed, aye. Page Agenda Item Number Two, motion to be upheld. The council consideration on the number three, council discussion and approval resolution R2016-08, directing the town manager to support the Desert Potholes Mountain Bike Association DFMBA and DFMBA in their application for grant funding for the retailer REI and development of Phase One of the town of Cape Creek Gateway Trailhead. Mr. Bass, standing?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. The Desert Potholes Mountain Bike Association approached staff. They are applying for a grant with REI to improve the Cape Creek Gateway Trailhead over by the Water Ranch. In October, we had improved the trail access there, and they were a big, the Desert Potholes Mountain Bike Association, some of whom are here tonight, were a big part of that. So what this resolution before you does is directs the town manager, who can direct staff, to work with them to put this toward the project. It's a $7,500 grant. It's a start, and we're hoping to develop this trailhead through phases, and this is one of the first phases, and they'd like to take the lead on that. So this is what this resolution allows to do. Does any question?
Questions from council? Vice Mayor? Councilman LeBaron?
Does this motion require any input of financial support from the town?
No.
Only some staff, now, is that correct?
No, it's correct.
Council, anything else? Any council question left? Public comments on Agenda Item Number Three? Anyone wish to speak on this?
I have a question.
A question?
Um, so, Mary Jones, can we? Benny, where exactly is this trailhead? It's at the gateway, but it's failing.
Is there a map? Okay. Do you know where the Water Ranch is on Cape Creek Highway? The trail goes from here all the way up to there, and all the way up to there, but the town owns, is the trailhead will be right in this area.
And the trailhead will consist of cars?
It'll be for horse trailer parking, car parking, and all non-motorized uses, but the parking area is going to be quite large, and it'll be the beginning of all of our trails.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments to welcome?
Spencer, I can't pronounce your last name.
Hello, my name is Spencer Schmitty, and I live in Cape Creek, and I'm going to be in support of this. I'm representing the Cactus Shadows Mountain Viking Team and the FIBA on this. Us high school kids, we were one of the people to hand-build these trails that connect North Sonoran Preserve and Cape Creek Rec for Regional Park, and it really gives us an opportunity to train and to keep doing what we love to do. Thanks.
Ernie Woodburn?
Sure.
Little piece again. I'm in favor. I ride horses. I rode my horses over those trails, and anything to operate and make our town more recreational friendly. We all have to get along. There's a lot more bikers here than when we moved, sometimes on the weekends, that just kind of laid back a little more in terms of trail riding, but I think it's a good idea. I'm in favor.
Richard Woodbury?
Maybe you didn't hear the clerk, Karen.
Richard Woodbury? Did you want to say?
He's left.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wish to speak? I'll bring it to council, we need a motion. Thank you. Al, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve resolution R201608, Resilition of the Mayor and Town Council of the town of Cape Creek, Arizona, directing the town manager to support the Desert Potholes Mountain Bike Association, DFMBA, in their application for grant monies from the retailer REI for the development of Phase One of the town of Cape Creek's Gateway Trailhead.
Second? Second, Vice Mayor.
I want to thank all those of you who helped firsthand build those trails, and thank all the citizens that volunteered to maintain trails. This is exactly what we should be doing, and should be proud, and I'm really happy to support this.
Councilman Bunch, you have a second?
Same, what Vice Mayor said.
Anything else from Councilman LeBaron?
Yeah, helped to construct this trail and are using this trail on several occasions. Pretty difficult to figure out where to park. This trail connects somewhere around 100 miles of trails in the Phoenix Preserve, and something like 50 miles of trails in Cape Creek. It's a great way to access it if you can find a place to park. Phoenix doesn't have any trailhead parking close to this, so this will give us access to a place that's difficult to get to otherwise.
Anything else from council? Carrie, the rule, please, since finances have fallen for this?
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman LeBaron?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Mayor France here?
Yes, by unanimous vote, the motion clearly applies. Thank you, council. Last but before, item, council discussion and approval of resolution R2016-07, authorizing the town manager to waive the ticket search RC for the Desert Potholes Community Association, Cape Creek Proloo, to be held April 2016. Town Manager?
May I, council? By council resolution, we're required to charge a $3 surcharge on all ticket sales for events held at the proloo grounds, for whatever reasons. I think it was miscommunication, misunderstanding. The parties believe that it could not port to affect this year, but would be affected next year. So I'm just asking, by the same resolution, which provides a waiver clause that you can make for just this year, the PICCA, I think there would be a problem.
Question from council. Councilman Lefkley, what was their stated reason, or what's our stated reason for wanting to waive this this year? I just don't see any reason.
I think they were under an impression that they were not going to be affected by this policy, by this resolution. We have communications with them. They do not believe that we have communications with them, to be honest with you, and they thought that looking at their finances, adding on $3 surcharge this year, since they already had priced out their tickets and made a right arrangements with their ticket sale, it was too late, and I just think it was an oversight, to be honest with you.
So they'd have to take the $3 cost out of the ticket price instead of adding $3 to the ticket price, is that what you said?
Correct. Usually when you sell tickets, is the ticket event, is any facility fees, or a big thing is a fee for the ticket sale, for whatever reason, the one for the facility use was not included in their sales pot, in their sales and their marketing. I do think they thought that it was not going to apply to them for this year.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor, question?
I just have one. I was at the meeting when we discussed this, and there was a fairly disparate perspective with respect to communications. I was convinced in listening that there had been communication, and perhaps that was either forgotten or ignored, but my question then was, have we gotten any improvement in communication with the other aspects that need to go forward here pretty quickly to have assumed yesterday's?
I would say that through the building official, once in my office, we have contacted them a number of times on minor things. They haven't been responsive back, but I think it's also a very large organization with a lot of volunteers. So I think it needs to be worked on. I think part of the meetings that you were part of was to have a debrief after the event, and to work on that aspect.
I just, I guess, we're trying in a rhetorical way to make sure that all communications are in writing, so we don't have any more miscommunications between the house yesterday's because it's ours.
We got to make it clear.
Councilman Bunch?
No question.
Okay, there's public comment on Agenda Item Number Four. I'll take back to council for a motion. Thank you, Councilman Bunch.
Move to approve resolution R2016-07, Resilition of the mayor and town council of the town of Cape Creek, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to waive the ticket search RC for the Desert Potholes Community Association, Cape Creek Proloo, to be held April 2016.
Motion made, and seconded. Councilman Bunch?
Not real happy about this, unfortunately, there was a breakdown in communication and difference of opinion, and we just need to really go on and move forward, and this is the limit that's going to happen.
Vice Mayor LeBaron?
Yeah, and my perspective is exactly what Councilman Bunch's perspective is, but one other addition, that is that I don't see any way that it wouldn't be, there hasn't been effective communication to this point, so that this is a one-year problem. I think going forward, we need to expect and reaffirm what everyone understands, I guess, a little more detail.
Agreed. Anything else from council? Carrie, this has financial implications, the rule is.
Councilman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman LeBaron?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor France?
Yes, by unanimous vote, I do approve the motion. Thank you, Esser. Council, I'm going to adjourn.